Good evening, everyone. My name is Jonathan Gale. I am the Dayton Coordinator for Persons with Disability. I'm the ADA Coordinator for the Town of Dayton, and I am the co-chair of the Dayton Commission on Disability. I've called this meeting with others in town who I will ask to identify in just a minute and state who they are, so that we can hold our first meeting of what I'm referring to as the Task Force for Building an Accessible Playground in Dayton. So before I even do a roll call, although we don't have an agenda, I'm going to ask that everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then for a short moment of silence for residents in town far and wide and near who have been ill or passed away from COVID or any other reason within the past reasonable period of time. So I'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you very much. Can everyone hear me okay? I hope. Okay, I'm going to ask those people who are participating up to this point. For those of you who don't know, I am visually impaired, totally blind, and I am not able to see the screen to know who's joined us, although Kevin did tell me who's joined. If others do join over time, I hear their name unless there's no name assessed with it in my ear. But in the meantime, if each person could unmute yourself and identify who you are by name, and if you are on or representing any of the committees or commissions in towns, if you could just let us know so we know that going forward. So we'll start with Kevin.
My name is Kevin Smith. I am currently a voting member of the Dayton Commission on Disability.
I'm Tim Pacico, a non-voting member of the Commission on Disability.
Yes, Tim Ryan's last four phone number, 5907, for those on the screen, because I'm not on my computer. I am representing, I'm the Vice Chairman of the CPC, and I am a city member of the Parks and Rec until the April 10th election.
So we have some other members.
We have some other members. Kevin, if you could call their name and they could unmute and identify themselves, whoever you say.
Mr. Berquen, could you unmute and identify yourself, please? He may have not dialed in. It looks like he's on a computer but not dialed in. He has video only.
I know on the computer, on the computer, if you do alt Y, that should mute you and unmute you.
If it's the phone, I think it's going to be star six, I think.
Correct.
We also have Linda H. Is that correct? Can you unmute yourself, please, Linda? Go unmute yourself. You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you.
Linda, could you just identify yourself if you're on a committee or joining?
I'm not on any committee, but I have been very interested in the Parks and Rec, as Ken and Tim can verify. I have a special needs great-granddaughter that we do an awful lot with, and some of you may know her because she is on the special needs cheerleading team for DR.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Woods, you're with us?
Yes, sir. I'm here. I'm a concerned citizen. I live across the street from a playground that needs to be rebuilt in a bad way.
Okay. And I guess there's one person we're not able to communicate with. Is that right, Kevin?
Yes, Tom, for some reason can't.
Well, if Tom, if you're able to join in the conversation, that would be great at any point. Feel free to just chime in because this is kind of, it's like having an open mic night, I guess, for the first, for our first conversation. So what I wanted to do was begin by talking to. Tom, I just heard your iPad join.
That was, that's another, we have another participant.
Okay. If whoever joined could just open your mic for a minute and unmute yourself and identify yourself for all of us, that would be great.
I'm wondering if that's Tom.
Nope. Well, if anybody is able to unmute themselves and join in this conversation anytime, that would be great because we need more input rather than less. And as I said, this is an open conversation about where.
All right. I think I got it unmuted.
There you are. No worries.
Tom Berquen. Tom Berquen.
And Tom, are you representing yourself or one of the committees?
I'm representing the CPC as the chairman.
Okay. And thank you for joining us. I really appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
Absolutely. So what I've, what I've, what I've asked us all to convene for, and I'm assuming this is the first of many meetings and with many other participants as time goes on, is to begin thinking about building an accessible playground in Dayton. And before we even really start to have any conversation and banter, just different ideas and thoughts in general around, some of the considerations that we want to think about are the type of playground we want to have as an accessible playground. And by the type, I mean the types of equipment we would have, how expansive or not it would be, how inclusive we can make it, how inclusive we can possibly make it, so that it can encompass as many people with different types of disability as possible. The materials that would be used, the types of things they would be able to use, the flooring for the playground, the fencing for the playground. We also need to consider that one of the, one of the biggest caveats and discussions, of course, is going to be location, location, location. Is North Dayton the right place for it? I don't know that. And I know some people feel it strongly is, and I know other people feel it may not be. So the question is going to be, is North Dayton the right place for it as well? How are we going to raise the funds for it? Are there going to be funds that we strictly use from, from grants that we apply for? Are there going to be other funds available through different commissions within the town or committees of the town? Do we need to do a fundraising project for any of this? That's, that's a potential, too. What about parking and accessible parking and accessible resource to get to the playground? Wherever we hold, wherever we ultimately build this playground, we have to make sure we have enough accessible parking and that the, that the point from, from parking to the playground is fully accessible as well, and that could potentially exclude certain areas and could include other areas. So those are some, those are just a few of the things that we have to think about as we go forward. I know that the town has been asking for an accessible playground for a long time. I've only been a resident of the town in full disclosure for under five years. I am also a person with a disability, as I've said, although mine is visually, a visual impairment. So I, I think that there's a lot of things to be bantered about. I have a lot to learn from those of you who are long-term residents about what you think. And again, location, location, location. North Dayton might be the right place for it. On the other hand, if it's not, then what do we do with North, North Dayton? Because clearly, the residents of North Dayton, you've been asking for a long time to have, you know, a re-enhanced playground there and a playground where the equipment works and so forth and clean, et cetera. So there's a lot of things to think about. So those are just a few, but we also ultimately have to determine who the contractors are going to be. What is the design going to look like? I have some preliminary things like that that I've received from a few people. I deliberately didn't put any of that out there for tonight as attachments, because I wanted to be able to have an open discussion without anything prematurely or preliminarily being brought to the table without everyone who's potentially going to be involved having a say in how this is all put together and how we move forward. So I'm going to shut up for a minute or at least be quiet. That's a poor term to use. Thank you. And ask somebody else to contribute their thoughts.
I'd like to say something right off the bat.
Certainly.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, you know what, but I'm, what I'm going to do is always ask people, because the way I do, sir, is I, for, for people that.
Mute everybody.
I, I can't, if you could just say your name, because only since I'm totally blind, I can't tell if somebody has their hand raised or not, and I'm not the person hosting, so that would be great.
It's Thomas Berquen.
Okay, thank you, Mr.
I'm representing the CPC as the chairman.
Go ahead, sir.
I've been in town for about at least almost eight years now. But as far as the playground, a lot of work went into that, trying to get that, the one up in the area that we were talking about, the north. It's in the north part of town. I guess, well, I know for a fact there was a lot of work done because I know the guy that did a lot of the research and all that. Now, I don't see a problem with, maybe you could, you know, once you get all this engineering, planning. From what I understand, a lot of the other playgrounds could be enhanced and also improved. And maybe that's something you might want to look at, you know, doing. I'm not exactly sure. There might be three or four, but I mean, maybe that's something. I mean, I don't know. I'm not an expert on it, but I'm just thinking, you know, moving down the road. Once we get through this pandemic, they start opening things up. You know, the people want a nice equipment, and they deserve nice equipment in these playgrounds. And I have a grandson that's has spina bifida, and, but he's doing well. He had, they had the operation, and he's doing well, but he still would like to be able to go. If he's in town with me, I could take him to the playground or to a playground. So I totally support all this. You know, bringing everything up to snuff to fit the disabilities laws or recommendations. So I don't know. Is that enough for you for now? Because I can shut up, because I can talk for about an hour, you know, if you want me to.
Yeah. Tonight, actually, tonight, we only have 45 minutes because there's.
Yeah, all right, so I'll.
Only because there's another, there's another meeting that needs this, this cable channel, if you will, or Zoom channel after us. So that's the only reason.
Probably the CPC.
Yes, it is, by the way.
Well, that's what I gotta go do that one, so I hope I can figure, I'm doing pretty good so far.
No, you've done well. And thank, first of all, thank you for your contribution. Thank you for, for voicing, and I hope you stay involved in the process because we need that he's involved.
Yeah, I'm definitely interested. Anything with the, to improve the town, and I thank you for having me.
And none of us know everything about everything, so.
Nobody knows everything.
We don't, and we need all the input. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add so far?
Jonathan, this is Kevin Smith speaking. I'd like to kind of respond to both of you. So I think it's public knowledge at this point that I am seeking a seat for Parks and Recreation in the upcoming election. And I just want to, I think this is a good time for me to share some of my ideas. I think it has been misconstrued that my opinion and the opinion of the Commission on Disabilities is that we didn't care for the design for the North Dayton Playground, and that's not entirely true. My, I guess the best way that I can describe my feelings on it is that, and through listening to different residents throughout town, I am 1,000% on board that the North Dayton Playground should be one of the number one priorities of the Parks and Recreation Department. I just don't feel that spending or asking the town for $300,000. I know the figure in their budget, original budget was $225,000, but additional lighting, parking lot, pathways, et cetera, that needs to be added on to that figure. I think that location doesn't warrant spending that amount of taxpayer money. I think we need to revisit a smaller scaled, less expensive option for that, for that location. And then the real, you know, and not to say that we can't do some fundraising and maybe some grant writing for that location, but I don't feel it's the best, best location to build, you know, what we would consider. When I say we, I would say Jonathan and I probably have the most input on a full, on a fully inclusive playground. I don't think it's the best location for that. So I think maybe we visit the playground at Town Hall, and that becomes our fully inclusive playground, and then some of that equipment gets allocated and reused for, whether it be, you know, school lane or the other small park down by the boatyard. So there's, there's a lot of discussion to be had. One other thing that I want to clear the air on, because it was brought up that it was our opinion or our view that if one child can't play, then no child should play. And that was upsetting to me on such a deep level, because that's not our position. Our position isn't like, well, we're not going to do it, because if these kids can't play, then nobody isn't. Our position is that we want to put in the effort and come up with a plan so that all children can play. We're not trying to take anything away from the people of North Dayton or the town as a whole. We're really trying to formulate and help come up with a master plan that includes everyone in town. And that's, I think that's pretty much all I have to say on the subject for now until we.
Get a little bit more. More time, maybe.
Anyone else like to have anything right now?
Mr. Gale, Tim Ryan's. I'd like to just put a disclaimer out there first that these are my views and my views only, and do not reflect the boards or committees that I serve on. I had a discussion with Mr. Gale earlier this evening, and I think he understands my views. And I think it's, what's, what happens is, is that if you would try to access CPC funding or go that route first is that we've never gone to a special town meeting to allocate funds. We've always gone to a, an annual town meeting, because that's where more voters are, and it is the voice of the people. So in regards to that, I don't believe that the CPC would ever go the route of a special town meeting. Now, when discussion with Jonathan earlier this evening, I mentioned to him that I've not only done this once, I've done this twice. I'm not looking for anybody to pat me on the back or anything like that. I've gone to two contractors who are handicap accessible playground builders. They're on the state bid list. Things didn't transpire the way they did. It's unfortunate. It happened. That's what it is. I'll just say this is that my opinion is that I think we have enough time between now and not 2022's fiscal year annual town meeting, but go to not this June, but the following June. We have 18 months. We researched with the contractors who are on the state bid list. We have them give us designs. I feel personally that behind Town Hall would really cause a problem, because you still have the elderly facility that is up top. You see how the playground is, people accessing the track. There's really not a lot of adequate parking there. And you do not want pedestrians continue to go into, I know it's a public building, to continue to use the restrooms. So that's one issue. North Dayton's residents, yes, they have been clamoring for a playground for many years. I do believe they do deserve one. The contractor, the last one that I received bids with from, they only, they just receive grant monies plus also a discount on purchasing the equipment and storing it, that type of thing. So I think that we have plenty of time between now and, say, the following June to look at all of our playgrounds, because I just want to remind the residents, excuse me, that if any new apparatus is installed at any playground or upgrades, it must be handicap accessible. That is the Massachusetts State law. So I, I just want people just to remember that. Now, in regards to, I feel that if we were to spend in excess of, you know, $300,000 to $400,000 in a certain location, you have the Capital Outlay Committee, those funds have been sitting there, they've been allocated. This is a capital outlay project under the parameters of the law. You could tap those resources, use CPC funds, also any grant monies that would be available, that would also be a plus. But I also wanted people to remember that the town had paid for a contractor to come in to do a feasibility study to do handicap accessibility for everything, all of our buildings, all of our playgrounds. I've never seen a copy of the final reports. I do not know what it states. I don't even know if it's, it's there or if it's been completed. So I think that's something we'd also have to look at. And Kevin, Mr. Smith, I, I disagree. I think the residents of North Dayton do deserve something, but again, yes, if you do build anything back there, it must be handicap accessible. So you still are converting an area for handicap accessibility parking, which has to be paved. You still have to pave an area or in a location to go all back. I've heard people say that they want to remove the ball field and put the ball field out back, but it's, it's just, it cannot physically be done for the dimensions of a ball field. We've already looked at it. It's been, that's been looked at in the past. So again, I would like to thank Mr. Gale and the members of the Commission on Disabilities and the liaison for having me this evening and allowing me to express my opinions to you, whether they're useful in the future. I do not know that. Mr. Smith has alluded to the fact that he is also running for my seat that is going to be empty on the Parks and Recreation Commission. And Kevin, good luck. I'm sure you'll do a fine job if you are elected by the residents of Dayton. I'll just say that. I will do my best to try to stay involved as much as I can, if I am allowed to do that, because I will no longer be the CPC representative to the Community Preservation Commission. Going further, after the election, because there'll be a reorganization, and they'll have to send a representative from the Parks and Recreation Commission to fill my seat. So I just want that to be known, so Mr. Smith knows that also. Now, I've also reached out to my other commissioners in regards to being involved with this meeting this evening. As you can see, I think the silence speaks volumes. I'll just say that. But again, Jonathan, I thank you for having me this evening. I do have a CPC meeting I have to attend shortly, and I don't want to tie up your time. So thank you very much.
So first things first, if anybody else has anything to share. Tim, thank you for sharing your ideas and your thoughts and for everything you've done up to this point. You have put in an enormous amount of effort up to this point to get us to where we are already, and I don't want that to go unsung. I think we're all very, very aware and very appreciative of everything that you've put into, to even getting us to where we are right now. And I clearly want to make sure that's acknowledged. Thank you very, very much.
Well, I thank, I thank you and the others for, for your kind words. And I've enjoyed my time serving on the Parks and Recreation Commission and working for the residents of the town to, you know, try to fill their recreational sports needs in town. So thanks again, and I would like to be included in any future Zoom meetings that you have, if that is allowable.
That is, that is allowable. These are public meetings, number one. Number two, I will make sure that you and the other members who don't have information on the study that was done from KMA for the Town Engineering Study, that you get a copy of the information that refers to the playground areas. What I will tell you is that there, there, it's an overall evaluation of what the town needs and needs to do. What it's not, and I want to be very clear, is a specific engineering study. So, you know, it may be that when we look at different potential sites, whether it's North Dayton, Town Hall, or anywhere else, that we actually also need to potentially contract for a specific engineering study and architectural study. That doesn't mean that the plans that are there aren't already part of that, and that may be something, again, Mr. Ryan, from what you've already put together, that we look at and, you know, intertwine that. But we may have to undergo some sort of a direct engineering study as well. So I just, I want to throw that out there. Does anyone else have anything they want to share for us before we go any further?
I'd agree. Jonathan, if I may, before I go this evening, I just wanted to, again, thank you for having me. And Kevin, good luck in the election, and may everyone stay safe and be well.
Thank you, Tim. I'd just like to, it's Kevin again. I'd just like to answer back to Mr. Ryan's real quick. That, this is what you just stated, some of the ideas and some of your concerns with different locations is the reason why we created this subcommittee is to, because we want everybody's input. I think there's a little bit of a stigma about the Commission on Disability that we're trying to be a road, that, that, that people are treating us like we're a roadblock, but we don't want to, we're not that at all. We're trying to provide alternative ideas to increase accessibility throughout town. And like, I, I would, I would never argue anything that you just said to me, like with some of the issues at the Town Hall Playground. It makes sense. We, we haven't had the opportunity to visit individual sites and take measurements or see traffic patterns to say that one site is better than the other. But I, you know, we've had conversations before, and I certainly appreciate your input. And I know that you're not rerunning, and I thank you for your confidence in me, and I hope that you, you and I can keep in touch moving forward, because you have a wealth of experience in the department. So, you know, I appreciate being able to lean on you when I may have a question.
Well, Kevin, I do appreciate your kind words, and again, I, I do hope, you know, health, health-wise and everything that goes with it, that, yeah, I'd love to participate. And you know how it is, you know, we can all agree to disagree, but in the end, I do believe that with the commission doing the work that they need to do by law and others to be involved, I think we have a good group. I think we're going to get something done.
Mr. Ryan, you're a wealth of knowledge and resource. You're not going anywhere. It's that simple.
Thanks again. I have to, I have to run. So again, I just wanted to say thank you very much and be well and stay safe, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else?
Good night, now.
Anyone else have anything?
Thanks, Tim.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to add going forward in this conversation right now?
Well, no, I'd just like to say, can I talk again?
Sure.
I'd just like to say that I'm glad they're looking at all, all the playgrounds. And I think an example is if you look at the one, you know, just off the cuff, I mean, I'm familiar with the one near the Town Hall. And then the new, the new disability designs have this pad that goes down. So an example is the wheelchair doesn't get stuck in wood chips and stuff like that.
Correct.
So it is pretty, you know, it's time to move forward, and you, you guys know this, guys and gals. So I mean, basically, I'm, I, anything we can do to help move it forward. And it's for the people to have good playgrounds for their children, basically. I mean, that's something we've got to do, and I like the fact that you're, you recognize everybody. And I recognize, you know, the people with handicaps, and, you know, I'm all for that. I mean, I'm a retired firefighter and a Navy veteran. And I am, my grandson, like I said, he has spina bifida, but he had, came out of it with just a few maladies, but he's doing really well, so.
That's awesome. That's great.
Okay, so that's where I'm at. I'm, I'm, I want to help, whatever we can do to help.
Ken, Linda, anything either of you want to add right now?
I don't know. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. I do not think that the North Dayton site is big enough for what would be an inclusive park. Okay. I know they're very anxious to have their park back, and perhaps a few things could be put in there for the younger kids. But I'm, of course, very interested in the special needs. I have a special needs great-granddaughter that we do an awful lot with. And she is also, even though she lives in Seacock, she's on the Dayton Rehab It Special Needs Cheerleading Team. She's 10. She doesn't talk and she doesn't walk, but she's extremely expressive. I have taken her to Noah's in the other side of Fall River there, and I was disappointed in that park. So I just wanted you to know that. I don't know if anybody has been over there. I didn't care for the swings that were there, because she could actually lean outside of the swing. So I'm, I'm interested in what type, and I'm not saying that the park has to be completely for special needs. It should be all-inclusive. And but there are some items that I would be interested in, in seeing what goes in there. But again, I do think that the park in North Dayton is not big enough. I may be off point here, but that's my opinion.
Could I just comment on it?
Absolutely.
I think, I think, before you, before you, you speak again, I think, Mr. Pacico, were you going to say something?
Yeah, go ahead, Ken. I'm sorry.
I don't remember. I don't think I was going to say anything at the moment. No.
Okay, go ahead, sir, then.
Okay. From what I understand, when Tim did, Tim did some of the research, because we've talked about it unofficially, just, you know, being on the CPC. And he did a lot of research in New Bedford. Apparently, there's something down. And he did a lot of research in New Bedford. Apparently, there's something down in New Bedford that's a pretty good setup. And he did, yeah, you might be familiar.
That's what I just, that's what I just talked about, New Bedford.
You said New Bedford?
No, but it's, no, but it's the same playground. It's Noah's.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
It's no, yeah, it's Noah's. I'm sorry.
Okay, I I've never seen either one, but I just heard, the only one I heard about was the one in New Bedford. I'm sorry. So I don't, I haven't seen it. I just, you know, it's all.
Yes, everybody does talk about it a lot. I'm sorry. I don't mean to keep interrupting, but we're having a conversation here.
Nope, that's the purpose.
It's my opinion. It's my opinion. I have, I have a great granddaughter who is especially handicapped. And I put her in the swing, and she was actually able to lean over the side and get out from under what was holding her. The swing that is at the Town Hall is the best type of swing for her. So I don't know where you would want to go with that. However, this is my experience. And the swing at Noah's, definitely, we had to take her out because.
Injury.
Well, she was hanging over the side, and I said, no, no, this is not going to work. You know, my husband was swinging her, and I was in front of her, and we were going back and forth. And so I don't know what to tell you. I don't think it was.
I'm going to ask, I know Kevin wanted to say something too. We unfortunately, another meeting booked was short on what we have for a lot of, a lot of Zoom time. So Kevin, go ahead.
Okay, so I have the pleasure of knowing Linda's great granddaughter, because my daughter Leila also participates on the Challenge of Cheer Squad, so I know what her limitations are. And I know that it's increasingly difficult to provide apparatuses for children who are in power chairs, because they're, it's a heavier piece of equipment, or the heavier base chairs. That's one huge, huge kind of mountain to climb in the playground world. And then also you have the challenge of being, of having to transfer that child to use some of the play equipment. So I know there's a, there's a lot of research that can be done. So I guess my best answer for you right now, Linda, is that I have a resource. Her name is Dawn Oates. She's a former Dayton resident who runs a nonprofit playground organization. She has sent me, and I'd be happy to, like, maybe send you some emails or maybe even I can post it. I think you're involved on my, the Revive Dayton Parts page. I can provide some pictures of different swings that she sent me for children who have an issue with, you know, support issues. And this is another reason why we created this forum where we can have public input is some things that not everybody is going to think we can't, it's tough to cover all the bases just off the top of your head. But I know exactly, you know, the the challenges that you are facing. So hopefully, it's something that we can come up with a solution for.
I think it'll be good to have the task force.
So what I'm, what I'm thinking of is when I, when we put together our next meeting in a, in a, in a couple of weeks, but far in advance of that, to get it out to the town, what I think is important is for the town to really understand. And when I say the town, I mean, hopefully, many more people than are even in this call this evening, for the town to understand potentially what's involved in building a disability playground, all the things that you have to think of for making something all-inclusive for different residents, young, old, persons who have different types of disability, what's the different types of equipment to think about, different types of surface and so forth. Because to some extent, that's going to dictate not just location, but design, cost factor, other factors. So what I'm thinking for the next meeting, which will probably be in about two, two, two to three weeks, and I want to get the input of the people who are here at least, not thinking that this is premature but more proactive, is to have potentially someone such as Dawn and one other person as well join us in the conversation who can share their thoughts on what's involved in a fully accessible playground. What do we need to consider? What are, again, going through the things that I just mentioned, I think it's important for all of the residents who are willing and wanting to hear that and to ultimately be able to hear the presentations of perhaps two individuals about what's what's involved, and then to be able to ask questions of those individuals about what's involved. The next step after that, I think, is going to be potentially to, before we even look at our location or as we begin to form the subcommittees and look at location, and it doesn't have to necessarily be folks who run commissions or committees in towns. It can be interested residents who want to be part of this process as well. This is a very open, dynamic process. But I think it'll also be important for us to put together three to five other playgrounds that we can go look at. If we form, if we need to form a carpool and a Saturday for two hours or three hours and go look at other accessible playgrounds to see what they have and how they're built and how they're designed. I think that's going to give us a lot as well. And at the same time, again, after the next meeting, begin to reach out to designers and engineers to see what they can offer us. So I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that process going forward. I'd like to hear it before I.
I'd say that sounds good to me.
Kevin?
Yeah, Jonathan, that's a great point. And I think the biggest thing that, and you touched on this, and it's very important, is it's a community playground, so we want community input. It shouldn't be, you know, two or three people deciding that this is what's best for the kids. It needs to be, you know, a group effort.
I'm thinking that if we do this in about three weeks, and I can set this up in the next week or so that there's, you know, if there's close to two weeks to really potentially get it publicized in every way we can and get these couple of folks invited, at least that's getting people, you know, a lot of people have thoughts about it. This isn't a conversation at a next meeting to talk about location, location, location. You know, with, unless we're getting into the factors of this is what you need for a playground. It may be that certain areas are too large, and maybe other areas are too small. But we need to know what we should, what we should be expecting as part of a playground. And I think it's important for the residents to hear that and then ask their questions.
Jonathan, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Ryan's mentioned that he didn't think it should go forward for this annual town meeting, but perhaps next year. How does the, how does the commission, how do the members, people here feel about that? It felt we were going to try and shoot the hole, but that would really be rushing things. We want to do this right. We want to get it right. So what's the feelings? What do what do people feel about postponing it for next year? Keep the commission, this committee going, so we get it right, but funding too, so that's going to take a little while.
I'll, I'll give you my opinion, and I'd like to hear from the others before we have to end this, 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 excuse me, this conversation tonight. But my opinion is, especially if it's not, and I'm going to, again, I've only been in Dayton a short amount of time, and I can't visually see location, 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 especially if it's not in North Dayton. I think it's important to realize that going forward and doing this means that, to some extent, we may be looking at conceptually doing something for several playgrounds in Dayton to mitigate different needs, not just an accessible playground. So that could become part of this process through Parks and Rec, through CPC. It may, it may be driven by the Commission on Disability, but it's going to involve other parks, other locations, other movement of potential equipment, et cetera, et cetera. So hearing what you're saying, Ken, it may make sense. You know, we may be at this, at the next meeting, asking for funds for the engineering study. We may have identified where we think we want to go, and it may be that what we're asking for are the funds to be released or voted on specifically for the engineering study with the hopes of coming back with everything the following year, you know, and and moving forward on it. Yes, that is a possibility. I don't think we want to rush this.
I agree. I think, Jonathan, Kevin, again, I think that it's important that it be noted here in a public forum that maybe we wait until the, not this upcoming annual town meeting, but the following year, when, if we're talking about building a fully accessible playground. But that doesn't mean that the possibility of a smaller scale playground in North Dayton doesn't get done this year.
Absolutely, and it's possible.
ADA compliant, but not, not fully inclusive.
That's correct.
I just want to make that noted.
No, and I think that that's important because we may be able to mitigate part of this, you know, part A or part B while we're working on, you know, the big part C. So absolutely, I think that's important.
That we will make sure that we over, you know, we can oversee and give suggestions for not a smaller scale North Dayton playground and get that project rolling and and make sure it checks off all the boxes. And then we'll plan a more, a more advanced or in-depth playground for the following year at location to be determined.
And I think that that's important. Again, you know, we don't know if North Dayton is going to be the final big location or not. So if it's not, and we need to figure out how to provide North Dayton with, you know, you know, a more accessible playground with more accessible and updated equipment, then that's what we need to work on at the same time. We can walk and chew gum at the same time.
Really?
Yeah, we're a small town, but we can still do it.
Yeah, I know. I'm just kidding. Yeah.
Any other thoughts?
I've heard that somewhere before. I think the fact that you're stretching it out a little and being more methodical and not rushing into it. You know, you're really doing it the smart way. I'd have to agree with Ken.
So I think it sounds much better to do it that way.
So then what I'm going to suggest, for those of us who are at least here, if we can get a, assuming, I have to check with Town Hall, of course, to see what their calendar of schedule and events is like for Zoom meetings. But I'm going to go for roughly about three weeks, and I will work through the members of the commission as well as folks who I know to secure time, date, and so forth for a couple of folks who can, such as Dawn and maybe another person to share with us their thoughts on a fully inclusive playground and also to be able to get it out. So the, excuse me, we have plenty of notice far and wide on on folks who are able to do it. I think if we were able to have an in-person meeting, that certainly might potentially get a larger crowd, but we're not able to. So the goal is just going to be to get it out as far as wide as we possibly can. So when we do it, I would ask each of you to please encourage your partners in whatever, and whoever you know in the town to to join in the conversation and discussion. So I don't know if anybody has anything else they want to add right now. When I put the next one out, I will have a formal agenda to go with the second meeting of the task force.
You taking any input?
I'm sorry.
Public input?
Yep, absolutely.
Robert Woods, 158 St. Street.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Go ahead.
Thank you, sure. I live across the street from that playground in North Dayton. I met my wife there in the early seventies. I'm very familiar with the property. I was a playground commissioner for three terms, nine years. That playground, the way it's set back off of the road, is subject to vandalism. So I've been saying this all along. Some people don't want to hear it. But I've seen it happen year after year after year. So you have to be very careful about how much money you want to put back there, because kids will be kids. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Woods, first, go ahead. Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to answer Mr. Woods real quick. That's a great point, and that's part of my concerns with the original plan and budget for that playground was, I know you've brought that up numerous times. I've been to that location. It is an extremely difficult piece of property to kind of keep an eye on. So and that was one of my concerns. And but at the same token, Mr. Ryan's was also correct that it it doesn't make sense to try to relocate, you know, ball fields and things like that. So there's a lot more work to be done here than just like, oh, here's this plan, let's throw it back there and hope for the best. And that's, that's what we're trying to accomplish.
And I, if I could just really quick, say something?
No, yes.
Yes.
Go.
With the new technology we have today, I agree with the vandalism. I heard that a number of times. And I've listened to Mr. Woods comment on it. Yes, it is a risk to have, but I also know other places that have vandalism in other parts of the town. But with the new technology, I would sure that they would put some kind of surveillance to protect the investment.
What I, what I will say, from what I know of North Dayton, very quickly to to just to comment and on what Mr. Woods was saying too, is that from what I understand, from the parking lot to where the playground is, is a fairly extensive, you know, jaunt. And, you know, the parking lot would have to be revamped, the playground would have to be revamped, but you have, you have to get from A to B. And just the cost of making from A to B accessible and doing it correctly could be significant. And that could be one of the, I'm not saying it's not, but it could be a mitigator to potentially not having that particular playground there. That doesn't mean that the playground won't have either new or retooled equipment from another playground. It doesn't mean it won't be the site. But if the cost factor simply from an engineering perspective only is is quite prohibitive just to get a person from the parking lot to the playground, you know, adult or child, wheelchair or not, then it may be significantly something that takes it out of the running. I don't know. Again, I'm just throwing that out there.
That's all part of the process.
Yes, it is. Yep. So I know there's another meeting at seven, and they're going to be chomping at the bit.
I'm chomping at the bit now. I got to go over there.
To get over there. So this isn't, this is an informal meeting, but I'm still, just, I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn and continue in roughly about three weeks. I'll make sure that everybody who's in this one certainly gets the email and any information of any time.
Okay.
Anybody else, anything to add?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Kevin, for hosting. I really do appreciate it, and I appreciate everybody's involvement. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.